To discuss tonight's agenda at 5:30, we moved here to first floor chambers to conduct council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via remote option through Zoom or view on BCAT. Tonight, we're going to mix things up a little. Instead of starting off with the mayor's report, I have the pleasure of introducing to the public our presiding judge pro temp, Mr. James Armstrong. I should say the honorable James Armstrong, Jr. Welcome, sir.
Mr. President, council members, Mr. Mayor, Birmingham community, my name is James Armstrong. I am the presiding judge pro temp of the Birmingham Municipal Court. I requested an audience with you here today to relay to you that justice remains at the top of the agenda at the Birmingham Municipal Court in a fair, timely, and effective manner. How we arrived at this point, people don't know. I've been a pro temp here in Birmingham since July of 2022. On January 22 of 2025, the administrative office of the courts asked me to take over the role of presiding judge at the Birmingham Municipal Court. I accepted. On the 26th of January, I attended the Judicial College, a week-long intensive for judges appointed and elected in 2024. That was managed by the administrative office of the courts. This assignment came directly from the administrative office of the courts. And as you're aware, neither the city council nor the mayor played a role in their determination. At the court, we arraigned those who violate the laws of the city of Birmingham. We judged those who violate the laws of the city of Birmingham. We sentenced those who violate the laws of the city of Birmingham. And we continue to monitor those who violate the laws of the city of Birmingham as well. The court is administering justice at the judicial body of this city. Obviously, there are three branches of government, the city council, the legislative branch, the mayor's office is the executive branch, and the Birmingham Municipal Court is the judiciary. I've reached out to the mayor's office and hope to have an audience with him as well. We at the court are here to ensure the safety of the citizens of Birmingham. However, I am not from Birmingham. I'm from North Carolina. However, I've lived in the Northwest since 1993. I graduated from Western Washington University, graduated from Southern University School of Law in 2000. I spent the last 25 years practicing law. In my spare time, I spend time with my lovely wife. I golf when I can squeeze it in. I officiate high school basketball. So those are a couple of things about me professionally. I've been served on the Washington State Bar Association's Board of Governors. I have served as the president of the Washington State Bar Foundation. I was president of the Laura Miller Bar Association, and also the chair of their Judicial Evaluation Committee, who interviews potential judicial candidates who are either seeking appointments from the governor or who are running for position of judge. As you're aware, I'm aware of these requirements. I'm aware of the experience necessary to sit in this position. I turn to my staff. One of the concerning things for me in this whole process is the concern for the staff at the Birmingham Municipal Court. There's been extreme turnover. Those concerns, hopefully, I can tamp some of those concerns. Starting with my administrator, whose guidance I depend on, Lisa Hardy, with her assistance, the court has continued to run effectively and efficiently amongst uncertainty in the leadership. I met with my staff and I explained that my expectations, I explained that my expectations for them is to treat the person in front of them as the most important person. That applies to me on the bench while dealing with the busy docket, but while still treating that individual, though going through some circumstances and are uncertain as they move forward, I treat them as the most important person. That applies to my clerks, who are in constant contact with those who appear before the court. I explained that my expectations as the leader of the judicial branch is to do the job you were hired to do. I am not a micromanager. I don't peer over people's shoulders. I expect of them what I expect from myself. Diligent work to ensure justice comes out of this courthouse for those coming to this courthouse. At this moment, I am the face of this court, and by proxy, so are they. Justice will be done as a result. My clerks who assist me on the bench, Destiny Joe, Jennifer, Carla, those working directly with those who appeared before me at the front counter downstairs, Rachel and Sarah, my support services specialist, Mr. Famous, security, while which these days, security is of utmost importance. I see them by the front entrance of the courthouse with Mr. Mike. I see them outside of my courtroom with Mr. Will, and that instills confidence in me that the business of a court will be accomplished without any unwanted outside interference. These are people in the court community that work for this community every day. My role here is, as temporary as it might be, is to ensure that the judicial branch of the government of Birmingham continues to protect the community. That people charged with driving under the influence, who have placed the people of this community at risk or brought before me, and justice is served to the community. It's the role of the judicial branch to provide safety to the community against those who assault others, commit acts of violence, commit acts of domestic violence. We are here to protect the safety of the victims of these attacks because those victims are citizens of this community. There is another side of the court, however, Community Court. Our Community Court was established to assist those who are in mental health crisis or suffer addiction who found themselves in the middle of the system by committing a crime. The Community Court program provides resources for housing, treatment programs, and providers to allow people stability while continuing through those respective cases. With the court's assistance and stability, they're able to receive mental health treatment necessary or chemical dependency treatment that's necessary, and while under supervision, with weekly checks in by stakeholders that include mental health providers, defense attorneys, prosecutor's office, with all giving input as we receive progress on their reports on their progress, sorry. In his role as Community Court facilitator, Mr. Famous Tyra is engaged in outreach with the community of that programming. In fact, there is a resource fair at Marvin Williams Recreation Center on March 21, 2025, to further inform the community and to meet with the community. At the end of the day, the Birmingham Municipal Court, in essence, is the people's court. It's where most people who come in contact with the criminal justice system will come in contact with the criminal justice system at this level in this court. Whether that's for a violation of the criminal law or whether that's an infraction, they will more than likely be seen at this level. As such, my job as the head of the judicial branch for the city of Birmingham, as temporary as that might end up being, is to ensure that when the individuals come before me, justice is done for them and justice is done for the community at large. And to do that in the most effective, efficient, and fair manner, my hope is that my appearance here today before you, with my appearance, your concerns have been addressed and your doubts may be fading, hopefully. I look forward to meeting each of you. And lastly, and this goes for everyone here, at 550 Park Avenue sits the Birmingham Municipal Court. The court's doors are open to the public. I invite each of you, council members, community members, to come into the court. Take a seat. Observe what takes place. Make your own judgment based on your view of the work of the court. Mr. President, I thank you for allowing me to come in and introduce myself, let the council and the community know that even though there's been some turmoil in the recent past, that the court continues to do its good work. We're doing justice at the courthouse. We're doing justice fair. We're doing justice efficiently, and we're doing justice every day. Thank you, sir. And I'm open for any questions if the council has any questions.
Thank you, Judge Armstrong. So I will open up to the council members if they have any questions.
I don't have any specific questions, but thank you very much for bringing some calm into our community. It's been needed. There's a lot of people who have been very upset, including all the staff, and I'm really happy that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that I did observe the meeting back on the 5th. It was two weeks ago. And I did see, I did hear from the community, there are people from the community who are upset. There are people from the community who are frustrated, but I can rest assure you that the court is on the right track. The court is moving forward, and the court is meeting out of justice like it was supposed to. So hopefully, by me coming here, that eases some fears, allows the court to move forward in a positive direction.
I'll just echo my fellow counselor and also just say thank you for taking the time to put this together and spend with us because I'm sure your days are plentiful. So we really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us.
I thank you, sir.
Thanks again, Judge Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Hey, before I turn to the mayor's report, I need to mention, there's only three of us here. You're probably saying, where's the other ones? Where's the other council members? Usually, there's seven. So council member Chamberlain Coughlin and Mokler are in Olympia. They're attending the AWC Action Days Conference. And here, if you're warning, oh, they don't have a quorum. Council member Frye, I've been assured, is attending.
I'm here.
There you go. Hey, Denise. So we've got a quorum. And with that, turn to the mayor for the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
Thank you, President Younger, members of the council. So this evening, I'm going to change it up a little bit. I would like to introduce Port Commissioner Axel Strakeljohn, who is Chair of Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council this year, to give a brief presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council members, actually, here on KRCC business, you might know or may have heard that we have an annual KRCC Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council reception, and we held it in December. And at this reception, we have all of our electives that are in the legislative position and senatorial position give us a basic outline of what they see and they forecast into the next year. But we had this particular reception at the Kitsap Golf and Country Club, and one of our guests somehow started to choke. And your council member, Jeff Coughlin, raced over to that individual, that guest of ours, and gave that person the Heimlich in a very, very skilled fashion. And so I just would, behalf of KRCC, I just wanted to give Councilmember Coughlin a certificate, but he's not here. So I think President Younger will have to give it to you.
Yeah, I'll accept it.
On behalf of KRCC and the board, I'd like to thank Councilmember Coughlin for his quick action and saving that person and saving the day.
That doesn't preclude us from giving Councilmember Coughlin a round of applause. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Strakeljohn and Judge. Thank you so much. So, all right, let's get on with the mayor's report tonight. First up, some of the important business we do, and obviously, this plan update is at the top of the list. This will give the guidance for our cities as far as wastewater system improvements over the next 20 years. This is renewed every 10 years, but it's a rolling 10-year renewal program. And so, as you know, with the several projects and pieces of equipment you approve over the course of many years, that comes from this update. And so it prioritizes the work to be done. So the comment period is now open. It'll be, it's, well, actually, it'll begin February 27 and go till March 29. You can see the website. Please review it. We're looking for the citizens to provide comments. Next slide. All right. You've heard me report on the Anderson Creek Dam Removal Project, and we know the value of behind this and why we do it, to eliminate fish barriers, and which provides a really critical part of our habitat, you know, to, for so many reasons, it's important, and why the city believes in this type of effort. This project won an engineering excellence award, Excellence Award. And so you can see the name of the, was received as an American Council of Engineering Companies of Washington Engineering Excellence Silver Award for Complexity. And even though we had a consultant doing the work, the city of Birmingham managed the project. So those are, those are team efforts when we get that type of work done. I wanted to recognize not only the consultant that was selected to do the project by the city, but our city oversight on this project. So it's just a good opportunity to give a well-done to all involved in this project. Next slide. So BCAT, this is a rare opportunity. I hope folks will take advantage of this, and you spread the word that they're having an open house, and it'll be a chance, as you can see in the small print below, meet the BCAT crew, tour the studio, and become a member. And there's a lot of features in there, and there's a lot of opportunities that are available to the public. And so BCAT is going out of their way to open their doors, to just introduce themselves and all the great things they do. So February 27, between 3:30, 6:30, I hope folks will join me out there, and we'll, we'll take a look at the studio and chat about all the good things they do. All right, next slide. All right. So you've seen this memorandum. And this is the, was an update given by staff over the recent, recent Trump administration executive orders, and then my decision based on staff input to pause hiring a diversity equity and inclusion manager. So the, just for a little bit of update and over, you know, just to review, I put together an interview team for the final phase, which is, which is about three candidates who made the final cut and brought in council, counselors Goodnow and Chamberlain to be part of that process. As we had made the decision, and we're getting ready to make the hire, executive orders came down. And so almost as we were pushing the button for the final, for the final go-ahead. So the decision right there was rather than to move an individual and/or full family from the Midwest into the Northwest, under these uncertain conditions, the decision was made, and ultimately, I am the approving authority, the approval authority, to pause hiring this individual and to pause hiring the DEI position. So with that, we briefed the finance committee immediately. We also individually briefed the council president, and the council president, Younger, was briefed at different stages of this, and it happened quickly, and the finance committee chair, Jeff Coughlin, Counselor Coughlin, was also briefed either as a member of the committee and/or individually the next day as we were moving forward. So that's just a quick, kind of the quick background. The most immediate threats facing the city right now are answering the grant certifications. Those are the ones that we will first see, and we expect that to be in March. And we expect the questions to be asked about compliance with executive orders as a sign-off. So that's the first one. So I kind of wanted to give an update, even though I have the authority to pause programs, indoor actions, and I'll just kind of read from a summary where, if the mayor ascertains changes in circumstances or new concerns, such as these threats to the federal funding the city receives, it is appropriate for the mayor to pause and report his concerns to the city council for its consideration. And this is per the city charter. I'm not quoting verbatim. This is just a summary of my duties under the city charter. Now, under that same city charter, the city council is vested by virtue of Article 3, Section 12 of the charter with the power to adopt and enforce ordinances relating to and regulating its local or municipal affairs and appropriate to the good governance of the city. So what that means is these are broad powers that, that give the council authority to adopt an ordinance. And in this case, if the council were to choose directing the mayor to fill the diversity and community engagement manager position. So while the ordinance would be subject to a, could be subject to a mayor veto, a supermajority of the council could require the administration to take such actions. So what it does is a representative government, and with full transparency, it does define some of our roles and our responsibilities. And then we, after that, we answer to the citizens. But I just wanted to share a little bit of an update, and especially for the viewing public and the members of the audience. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, we're going to go to our acting city clerk, Lindsay Vector. She's got the consent agenda. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic funds transfers, checks number 409981 through 410147, and EFT numbers V42821 through V42949, in the grand total amount of $4,167,551.51. B, minutes of council meeting, February 5, 2025. C, minutes of joint planning session, February 8, 2025. D, minutes of study session, February 12, 2025. E, purchase of 2025 excess workers' compensation insurance from Safety National Casualty Corporation. F, conservation grant agreement with Puget Sound Energy for LED retrofit, Phase 3 and 4. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent agenda items, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. With that, I'll now open up to the public for comment on the consent agenda.
Mike Elsberg, Mike Simpson. I live in District 6. You know, the things on the consent agenda, they've already been discussed in our, our city council study sessions that happened last week. You've already made the determination that these are things that you don't have any arguments with, and you will either vote up or down on them, and that's great. Of course, we have three members here, one on Zoom, and then three that are out protesting whatever, at the, at the, at whatever event it is that they're protesting. So you'll vote up or down on this, up or down on these. And I, you know, I appreciate you giving me a little bit of latitude on commenting on this. I would like to thank you for, for the decorum that you presented when addressing our pro temp judge, unlike the previous, our previous judge who was unfairly treated when she came here and talked to our council and was brow-beaten by members of this council. And I think that that was shameful. And those members, the members of the council that did that should have been censured for that behavior. But I digress. We are here to talk about the, about the consent agenda items. And please, vote your conscience on the consent agenda items. Don't limit it to a, to a rubber stamp vote. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir. You don't have to raise your hand. Just come on up.
Hi. I don't come here very often. My name is Earl Burt, and I live over at 6410 Lake Drive. And on Monday, I went to Olympia, and I was with a group of people that were protesting events, you know, in Washington, DC. I didn't have a protest sign. I had a sign, which is here. Then I'll show it to you.
So, sir, can I ask, does this have to do with any of the items on the consent agenda? The person before you mentioned, and perhaps I should have stopped him, but you brought it back into talking about consent agenda. But with this purpose, we're going to have, we're going to have public recognition next. So if it's something that's germane to that. But if you have anything right now, as talked about the minutes, the council?
Oh, no. I don't, I, I'm not sure. I want to be in the public recognition.
Yeah, it'd be the next one, sir.
Let me sit down.
All right. Yeah. So just for the record, if we got new people here, the consent agenda is what our city clerk just mentioned, the claims and check register, council meeting minutes, a purchase of excess workers' compensation insurance, and a conservation grant agreement. Does anybody in the public have any comments on those items? No worries, sir. It's all good. All right. Hey, Dave, I want to check, did we have anybody on Zoom that has comments on those items? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close to the, to public, and I'm going to open up to the council for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Motion to second. Call for the question, please.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebulaski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodnow?
Yes.
Councilmember Younger?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So now, folks, next up is public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. This is not interactive. Therefore, the council is basically here to listen to you, your concerns and questions, but not provide answers back. There'll be no public comments tonight via Zoom because no one called in within the requisite 24-hour time period by calling the city clerk at 3604735323, at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Again, we ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Sorenson will have a timer up, possible? We had a power outage, that's why I'm asking. And then we'll also have the lights, the courtesy lights up. But I'm, I'm sorry to say, I have to keep you to the three-minute limit to be fair to everyone. So at three minutes, I'm going to cut you off if you're over. Okay? All right. With that, I now open up for public recognition.
All right. Here we go again. Well, thanks for the warm-up. So I got Earl Burt, 6410 Lake Drive. I went over to Olympia, and I had my sign, and this is my sign. So how do I, how do I do this? Can you see it? So let's just go through. You know what? You hold the sign because you know how to do it. So, thank you. So, yeah, there you go. So I said, I support federal workers, Capitol Police, Black History Month, Ukraine, DEI vaccines, and leg, egg-laying chickens, egg-laying chickens, and so on. So I had this sign set up, and I was standing in the, kind of a grassy area away from a lot of people, and people would walk up to me. A lady walked up, she saw the first line that said, "Federal Workers." I support federal workers. And she said, "Thank you." She said, "I'm a federal worker, been a federal worker for 20 years. I worked for the EPA." And I asked her, I said, "Do you feel safe?" She goes, "No." The next thing, I was walking around the Capitol area, and I saw a couple highway patrolmen, Washington State Highway Patrolmen, and they had, and I told them, I showed them the Capitol Police thing. And they said, "Thank you for supporting it." Capitol Police, they got beaten the hell out of them on January 6. And guess what? They, all the people that did that to them are free now. I talked about DEI, and I just heard about DEI with trying to hire somebody. We need DEI. We need people to be supportive of DEI, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I believe in vaccines, and I like egg-laying chickens. And they laughed, people laughed, and they said, "Why do you do that?" And I said, "Well, if you support the chickens, the virus, and the virus trips to humans, and the CDC is gone, who's going to protect us?" So I want to thank you. I don't come here very often, but do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we get to our next speaker, I want to correct something for the record. Earlier, Mr. Simpson's mentioned about council members Chamberlain, Coughlin, and Mokler being at a protest or something to that effect. So as again, as I stated earlier, they were at AWC Action Days Conference. It is not a group or mass protest, just for the record. I want to make that clear. It is sanctioned by the city council. We're glad to have those members down there, basically fighting for the interests of the city of Birmingham. So I would like to thank them, recognize that they're down there on behalf of the city council. With that, I'm going to keep public recognition open. I'm sure we have more speakers.
Hello. I'm Amy Waterman, a resident of Birmingham. First, I would like to thank the council for posting and communicating their letter reaffirming commitment to the fundamental rights for all residents. to the fundamental rights for all residents of Bremerton. In that letter, you state that you remain committed to listening, learning, and taking action. My request to the council is to focus on action. The mayor has done the residents of Bremerton a disservice by making a very public announcement that shows that the city will comply with directives on DEI before they exist. He has done so at a time when our state government is fighting for all of Washington to ensure an inclusive and supportive environment for all of our residents. Tonight, I am asking the council to take action and vocal steps to support our governor, our attorney general, and the leaders of our state agencies as they fight to protect our workers, our elderly, our students, our Medicare, our Social Security, and our environment. We are living in a moment where the city of Bremerton needs to get very clearly, very clearly loud, and declare for what we, declare what we stand for as a community. And I'd like to leave you with one final thought. What is a DEI program? Well, I can tell you what they are. I, it is a great disappointment to say that I have had a long and successful career in the tech industry. A large part of that was DEI programming. We worked beyond normal working hours to ensure that there would be a pipeline of computer scientists and engineers who were women and representative from minority. And we did that because we didn't want to be reliant on H1B visas to stand up the tech industry that we see today. It is good economics for a city, for an industry, and for a country. Thank you.
I'm Joe Walter. I was here.
One second, Ms. Walter. Hey, Dave, can you reset the clock, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms.
Thanks. Joe Walter, I was here two weeks ago. I want to echo what you just heard, pretty much, that action is what people need, and gratitude is what I want to offer to you. I know that you have no obligation to respond quickly to anything that you hear when we come up on an evening, taking the time to respond to us that evening, and then to act quickly with a letter reaffirming where we stand, even though it might have been redundant. I remember when we tried to become a sanctuary city, there was some pushback on the part of some council members saying that, "Well, our policies are already the right policies. We don't need this document." Well, we didn't need a reaffirmation of our commitment to the whole of our community, but it's the kind thing to do, and you did it. So, thank you. When there are members of our community who are terrified, like really terrified, afraid to leave their houses, afraid to just enjoy life in community, afraid to send their kids to school, whether their terror is valid or not is not the point, but that they feel it. And so giving them, sending them a message is the right thing to do and shows that you care. I came along with folks from CARE last time, and as others have said, addressing DEI and sticking with our plans to formalize our DEI work in our community or in our government, sticking with that is not just about the immigrant community. I know a young trans person who couldn't go to work for three or four days after the inauguration. He was that afraid of what it would mean for him. Right, so lots of us are impacted. I guess I just want to say how dark these days are, and darker than I have ever experienced in my 68 years of life as an American. And it feels like these are days not to be preemptively obedient, to not respond to the pace at which things are happening, but to stick with our commitments, stick with our values, and stick together if ever there was a time for all for one and one for all. This is it.
Mary Lou Long, longtime resident of Bremerton, District Six. DEI is being removed from businesses all over the country. Why? Because this policy, as it stands, is discriminatory. In order to fill employment positions based on race or sexual preferences, it is weaponized against some people. The outcome of such employment practices has been a disaster for employers. Now that DEI policy has been shown to be a hindrance rather than a help by the federal government, and now has decided to remove that policy from federal agencies. The new law of the land put millions of federal funds on hold to those who insist on practicing these policies. $19 million of federal funds that could come to this city are in jeopardy right now in Bremerton. If our council and our mayor continue with this practice, data has shown that DEI may have actually exacerbated organizational inequity. Diversity, training, and grievance systems have led to lower percentages of minorities in leadership positions because of the tangled interpretations and applications of that. As an example of how damaging DEI is, McDonald's lost $33 million by its interpretation of applying DEI principles when it gave out scholarships to only those applicants that had a Latino or Hispanic parent. This was a clear discriminatory application of DEI. Continuing with DEI puts the city in grave jeopardy of losing millions in the future. In the event, the city continues to use DEI training and policies besides losing federal funds, we make our city vulnerable to millions of dollars of lawsuits. Taxpayers' money that could go to fund sidewalks, bike paths, bridge improvements, homeless shelters, and new police officers. For these reasons, I ask the city council and the mayor to take steps to remove DEI policy and any renamed program that resembles DEI. If it quacks like a duck, waddles like a duck, and has feathers like a duck, it's a duck, no matter how you want to frame it. Or you could say, a rose smells, is, no, a rose is always a rose whether by any other name. Please don't try to be clever and sidestep the principles of the federal policy. You'll be caught, and we, the taxpayers, will have to suffer the consequences at your hands.
One second, before we get to the next speaker, just want to remind everyone that this forum, you are allowed to clap or to boo or whatever. But as long as it's not disruptive to the speaker who has their three minutes on hand, I ask that you you let the speaker be heard. And let's just have decorum. I just, so far, you've been pretty good, but just be respectful, that's all I ask. Let's be respectful of everyone. So, thank you. And with that, sir, go ahead.
Hello, Chris Thatcher, lifelong Kitsap County resident and Bremerton resident for 30 years. I am here to address DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. If there's anybody in this room who doesn't think any one of those three things are good, you're wrong. I would like to show my support to the council for trying to create a workaround for the cluster that we have been bestowed upon us by a fascist president. Mayor Wheeler, I understand your predicament. You are trying to retain $19 million in federal funding. But I would urge you and demand that you do not retain that funding at the expense of the citizens of this city. Our government is systematically being dismantled, department by department, as we sit and bicker over diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's going to get a hell of a lot worse than it is now for all of us, even those red hat MAGA's that voted for the president. You're going to be affected, and you're not going to like it. That's all I can do is, I'm appreciative of the council. And Mayor Wheeler, I know where you're at. You are a good person. I have known you for 30 years or more, and I know you to be a good human, and I respect that. I'd like to challenge you, Mayor Wheeler, and encourage you to find a way to still keep diversity, equity, and inclusion policies within the city and do so in a way, if you can, that allows us to still keep federal money. It's challenging for the council and the mayor, but I think that might be our best path forward, if we can do that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Eight or night, not really good, particularly with thoughts in my head. Hopefully, I can express them well. I appreciate all sides of an issue. I always try and take both sides into consideration and hope you for do as well, particularly in a troubling position as this. I'm worried about critical theory. I don't like the idea of exceptionalism, group identity, identity politics, exceptional politics. I think, as a nation, we should focus on individual liberty, individual merit, and also focus on our value as people. And particularly as government, we should look to the Civil Rights Act of 1964. I believe that as I followed a podcast, they did not, they focused on equality. And that is why I'm here today. I want equality, without color, without bias, that we can look at each and every hire for the city, for every people in our life, and just look at the person. I want to look at a soul. I want to focus on their merit, their ideas, their abstract thinking, and what they can provide for the taxpayer and the people of Bremerton. Whether it was back in the day, conservative Democrats or liberal Republicans, they focused in the middle, they tried to meet negotiation. That's why we have the system that we have today. I think particularly right now is a pivotal time to not go too far right or too far left, that we should focus on the core values of this country and bring it back to Bremerton. I believe that's what Bremerton really wants and really needs. Thank you very much.
Hello, city council and people of Bremerton. My name is John Johansson. I live in City Council, District 3, and I have lived and worked in Bremerton for the last 10 years. While there are numerous issues that the Bremerton government needs to correct, I'm going to focus on one today, the Bremerton Municipal Court. The CJC, or Commission on Judicial Conduct, report regarding recent issues with the Bremerton Municipal Court is a long document, which makes it unlikely that most residents will read it. So I'll briefly summarize the findings. They found negligence. The court's safe was open, left open multiple times with funds inside. Financial mismanagement. Receiving funds was overdue, and people posting bond were not reimbursed even after the defendant's obligations were met. Contract violations. The respondent ordered court staff to accept payments from defendants whose accounts were already referred to collections, violating the legal contract with the collection agency and causing extra work for the court staff. Communication failures. Law enforcement was not informed in a timely or accurate manner about court actions, such as ignition interlock device requirements, license suspensions, and warrants. Unfulfilled competency orders. Competency restoration orders were not conveyed to the appropriate institutions, leading to delays and extended custody periods. Delayed bench warrants. Bench warrants were not processed in a timely manner, leading to wrongful arrests and potential harm to defendants. No contact order failures. Multiple no contact orders were either not processed or not rescinded, resulting in victims losing protection or defendants facing wrongful arrests. Restitution delays. Restitution payments received by the court were frequently delayed, causing crime victims to wait up to five months to receive the restitution paid by defendants. Here are some of the quotes from the panel members responsible for the CJC report. "The factors, the factors in this case led the panel to the imposition of a censure with the recommendation that the State Supreme Court remove respondent from the bench. None of the panel members were persuaded that respondent truly understands the magnitude and impact of her misconduct, or even that she believes she has engaged in misconduct at all. There was no persuasive evidence that she felt any remorse for her treatment of others. Therefore, there is no basis to believe that the respondent has the capacity or motivation to change. The possibility of returning a judge to the bench, who will likely continue in conduct that harms court staff, the operation of the court, attorneys, the city, and the public, is not an acceptable outcome." There is a lot more to this story, but since my speaking time is limited.
Hello, city council. My name is Dylan Minden Hall. I live in East Room, and I own a small environmental consulting firm called Haven. Want to bring in a topic to your attention that you may not be aware of. I'm concerned that the city is using AI platforms for criminal and civil law enforcement without appropriate guardrails, transparency, and accountability. This erodes trust in government, and it undermines our overall democracy. So I'll tell you how this came to my attention. So last year, I got a letter from the city saying that my business hadn't filed its tax return for 2021. I thought, hey, that's pretty strange. That's before we moved to Bremerton. So I called the city to ask what that was about, and the staff person told me that, oh, they made a mistake. They're using an AI platform or something like that. So now I'm in the weird situation. I can't believe I'm even saying this. But if I ever get a letter from the city again, I'm going to be wondering, am I even talking to a human? There's, there's three things you need to know about generative models, and that's probably what the city was using in this case. These are neural networks. And the first is that these don't follow a rules-based algorithm. But if you use a calculator and you do 2 plus 2, it will always equal 4 because it's following a set of rules called math. But a neural network, like ChatGPT, everything is hallucinated. It might be very convincing hallucinations, but everything it's producing, it's not following a set of rules. And this is concerning if you're doing something that requires facts and accuracy, like running a government. Third thing, generative models can be biased. So that's concerning in the case of civil or criminal law enforcement. AI models are actually already being used extensively in criminal prosecutions for sentencing. And some have been shown to have bias against people of color. You tend to have bias in models if they are trained on biased data. The third thing is, no one really knows how neural networks work, which makes them inherently, I think, opposed to our democratic principles. Transparency, accountability. They're just too complex for any person to understand. So if you remember from, say, like, high school algebra, the equation for a line, y equals mx plus b. We know what a y-axis is, we know what an x-axis is. m is the slope of the line, b is the y-intercept. No one knows how, what all the coefficients mean in a neural network. Anyhow, I encourage you to review the existing use of AI by the city. Anyhow, I encourage you to review the existing use of AI by the city. Consider passing an ordinance to ban or restrict its usage, especially in the context of law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, before we get to the next speaker. Normally, like I said, this isn't meant to be an open back-and-forth dialogue, but I'm not aware of the city using AI. Mr. Riley, Mr. Sorensen, or City Attorney Fennell, they touched on all aspects. They touched on law enforcement using AI. They touched on billing using AI. If you'd like to respond, you're welcome to.
Yeah, the answer, the city is not engaged in using AI platforms right now. Current policy actually restricts the use of generative AI, so.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Sina Bennett, and I I live in District Four. I support the effort to bring back the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, and I also respect a person's right not to participate. People from all walks of life fought and died, serving our country under that flag to protect our rights and freedoms. Many did not get the treatment and honor that they deserved, but their sacrifices were not in vain. They helped to make our country a more perfect union for generations to come. They are heroes. Our American flag is the only all-inclusive flag. It represents the rights of every American, regardless of political party, race, religion, sex, or gender. There are other flags that represent specific beliefs and organizations. Almost every one of us has some faith or organization that we are part of, that we treasure very much. Even though these organizations may include members of every political party, race, sex, gender, or religion in them, they do not represent the faith or belief of all. I urge the City Council to consider all of the residents of Bremerton. Do not make decisions that would cause division in our city by choosing one flag over another to fly in front of our government building, even if you have found a legal loophole to do so. The American flag is the only flag that represents our unity. Finally, I appreciate the intent expressed by Council President Younger to respectfully listen to all sides, mul things over, before forming any opinions of his own or to make any decisions. And I hope for the same for the Mayor Wheeler and from all of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dan Herron. I work and I live in Bremerton, District Six. I watched the last City Council meeting. I watched with interest with comments on two issues. The first is DEI. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is often misunderstood as being in opposition to merit-based hiring. But in reality, it seeks to enhance mediocrity, meritocracy, I got to get the right word there, by addressing systemic barriers that prevent fair competition. Here's why DEI and merit-based hiring are not mutually exclusive. Merit is subjective. Traditional hiring practice often define merit in a way that favors certain groups due to historical advantages, like elite education or professional networks. DEI ensures a broader talent pool is considered, making the process more equitable. Unconscious bias in hiring. Many hiring decisions are influenced by implicit biases rather than purely objective qualifications. DEI initiatives help minimize these biases, leading to a more accurate assessment of true merit. Expands the talent pool. When hiring processes exclude certain groups, intentionally or not, companies miss out on highly qualified individuals. DEI ensures all qualified candidates, regardless of background, get a shot, fair shot. DEI does not mean hiring unqualified candidates. It means leveling the playing field, providing fair opportunities such as mentorship, training, and outreach to unrepresented groups. Finally, diversity enhances performance. Research shows that diverse teams outperform homogeneous ones in problem-solving, innovation, and decision-making. As merit is about hiring the best team, then diversity should be a priority. I'm happy to report that the company I work for fully supports DEI. And it's a good thing for me, because where else would an old white man get hired? For these reasons and others, I strongly support the city that the city of Bremerton stand up to some bullies in the other Washington and fully support DEI efforts locally. I'm not going to talk about my other thing, but I support the immigrant rights. That was my other point. Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Levine, City of Bremerton. You've heard my comments on DEI. I've emailed you my comments. I'm going to skip that. I want to go back to the bathroom problem. We all disagree on lots of things, but we all need a bathroom. Every single person in this room, I can assure you, whether they want to tell me about it or not, needs a bathroom. And they're all going to need one at some point, and we don't have enough of them that are publicly accessible. Now, I walk in downtown all the time, and there's obviously, I can tell from my own sensory experience of smelling it, not enough bathrooms. It would be really great if we had publicly accessible bathrooms. This benefits not only folks who are unhoused. This benefits me as a person who drinks a whole lot of water and would really like to keep doing that. This benefits people who have Crohn's disease. This benefits people who went and ate at our fun street fairs, and the lines at the boardwalk were too long for the bathrooms, and they wandered off, but then they were like, oh, God, I can't make it home. And then there was a bathroom downtown, which is glorious. Wouldn't that be glorious? To put a bathroom somewhere, this is beneficial to people with children who need a spot to change their child, and they don't want to just do it on the sidewalk, which I've seen done, and it sucks because there wasn't somewhere else to go. We need bathrooms. Bathrooms benefit everybody, regardless of your opinions, regardless of what you got going on in your life. You're going to need to take a shit somewhere, and you should be able to do it in a bathroom. There's no rule against profanities, so don't stop me. We need bathrooms. Thank you. We need bathrooms. We should put them in places. Now, here's an interesting thing that I learned recently. There is over half of our public park systems that don't have bathrooms. Now, some of those are pocket parks. I get it. The square footage is small. However, I've taken some fantastic photos of some bathrooms in Port Orchard that are basically like a permanent porta potty that are way easier to clean, they're way easier to maintain, and they're plumbed into place. You don't have to have a truck come and get all of the poop out of the thing. It's just there, and it's in place, and it doesn't take up that much space. And so some of our pocket parks could even have bathrooms. There's so many opportunities for bathrooms, you guys. This is the issue. All right, this is a public health hazard if you got people pooping and peeing everywhere. If you don't have somewhere to dump your menstrual cup, if you don't got somewhere to change your child safely, you need a bathroom, and you need it to be open. And also, could you please add heat to the bathroom that's in some of the parks? Because they're cold, and we had to close them because the plumbing froze, and then people didn't have a place to go to the bathroom. And boy, was that not a fun walk home that night when I figured out that bathroom was closed? Like, put heating in the bathrooms that exist and give me more bathrooms. I'm going to keep bothering you about the bathrooms, and I'll email you about the other stuff so that I have more time to talk about it. But let's get some bathrooms in here. Everybody needs them. Promise you. I promise you, I don't even have to ask. Everyone in this room needs a bathroom at some point. At some point, they will. It'll make road rage go down, and it'll make everybody's bladders a lot happier. Thank you.
Roy Runyon, Bremerton. First of all, I want to congratulate presiding Judge Pro Tem James Armstrong Jr. on his appointment to the Bremerton Municipal Court by censured and suspended Judge Tracy Flood, who is still receiving salary and benefits paid for by us, the taxpayers. She needs to resign. Second item I want to discuss is, I just want to say I demand the city of Bremerton dismantle its diversity, equity, and inclusion policy and defund the position of diversity and community engagement manager. So this came up because of the threat of the loss of nineteen million dollars in federal funding to the city for capital projects. And it's interesting to to hear that, you know, Greg is, doesn't have the doesn't believe in what he he talks about. So several council members suggested the city change the name of its DEI to something else so as not to risk receipt of the federal funds. Perhaps change the name to institutional racism, genderism, and intersectionality, ergi. To be honest about it. You know, the DEI manager position would cost Bremerton taxpayers between one hundred twenty thousand and one hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. Money better spent on maintaining our streets. So far, the city has spent, I estimate, fifty thousand dollars. That included a consultant contract. It's included training for city staff. So taken away from city staff and sit in classrooms and go through training on DEI. So Public Works Director Tom Nuckey at the last study session suggested to the city council that it should increase the car tab fee, which is currently twenty dollars, to better fund street maintenance. Well, I suggest we get rid of the DEI program, not fund the DEI manager, and put that money into street maintenance. In summary, I call for you to dismantle the city of Bremerton's DEI program, defund the DEI manager position, direct the savings into street maintenance, and restore the emphasis in hiring and retaining employees based on merit, knowledge, skills, and abilities, rather than the amount of melanin in one's skin, gender, or sexual preference, and other immutable characteristics.
So again, just before we get to our next speaker. Hang on, hold on, please. Point of order. So before we allow the next speaker their three minutes, all I'm asking is for the civil, we've been pretty good so far. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Council. My name is Chance Corey. I'm a resident of District Five, and I do want to talk to you tonight. Corey, we can play this game, but your friends back there just got real upset because we played it. I want to talk to you guys tonight about DEI and policies. You know, several council members, the mayor included, have shown up to Pride events over the years. They've shown up to Juneteenth. They've showed up to Black History Month celebrations. They've showed up to NAACP meetings. Now, when these diverse cultures need you, you're playing Judas. You're stabbing us in the back. That is exactly what it felt like to wake up and read the article in the Kid's Up Sun that we were pausing hiring. I understand that somebody was going to move here and why it was paused. But I want to know why the mayor has not readdressed the other DEI policies when he called in that same article for them.
So one one second, sir. Dave, you stop the clock. So I'm going to have my legal counsel intervene if need be, but right now, our general procedures, and I understand because we allowed someone else sign, hold up a sign. But Ms. Fennell, you want to give me some direction on this. I don't want this meeting to get carried away.
I understand.
So with signs, they they are allowed until they become a distraction, and the speaker can ask that folks move to the sides of the room so that folks in the audience can still view, and they're not blocking people's way. And so as long as they are not considered a disruption, they're permissible. If they start to be considered a disruption, the speaker can ask a content-neutral restriction that, for example, they be left to in front of speakers, or they be left to the side of the room, or that sort of thing. So I understand where you're going with that, and that is something that you can do as long as it's applied equally to everyone.
Okay, so I'm trying to apply this equally to everyone, and Mr. Runyon, respectfully, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fennell, when we had a speaker, if the speaker had a sign in their hand and they couldn't have pulled the sign up, we allowed someone else to help. Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Thatcher. And so the the other people, I respectfully ask, unless this gets me in trouble with the First Amendment, that everyone else usual decorum in that you sit down and you allow the speaker have their three minutes. Okay? That's all I'm asking for. I think that's reasonable. So again, I I believe I was, I allowed someone to come up to help. Ms. Fennell. So so hang on, and you guys, you must know that I'm trying to balance this and be fair. I've had, look, I've had complaints to the last one that I was not allowing, that people were making comments during one side, and it's like, no, I'm not going to interfere unless it becomes disruptive to the speaker. In my opinion, it started becoming disruptive to the speaker when we're waving sands. We have multiple people coming up to the podium. That's that's interfering with this. So with that, I'm going to allow the speaker to speak, and Dave, would you add another thirty seconds on that because of all this mess? So another thirty seconds. If you can. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be as reasonable as I can. Well, he was at one fifty-seven before, so I think you want to add another thirty seconds. Again, trying to be fair here. So I put two thirty-seven on there. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. A knife in the back is exactly how it felt to read that article. I understand people were moving here and pausing that individual hiring process. Now, the mayor has not since addressed or readdressed the pausing of the other DEI programs. And much like Judas, who was paid thirty silver coins, I guess we know that the price here is nineteen million dollars. But I ask you, at what point are the other lives in Bremerton worth nineteen million dollars? How many of these programs and policies do we have to see cut or eliminated before they're happy? I have a quote here I'd like to read from Pastor Niemoller, who was a German pastor in the nineteen forties. At first, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionist, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. I think if he was alive today, his questions might read, at first, they came for the immigrants, and I did not speak because I was not an immigrant. And then they came for the trans community, and I did not speak up because I was not transitioning. And then they came for the gay community and the ethnic communities. And I did not say anything because I was not gay or was not a member of the ethnic communities. But when they finally came for me, nobody was left to speak out. I'm asking Council to stand against what the president's orders are. I'm asking you to make sure that when you do go to certify these grants, that if there is a legal requirement for the executive order that we use the city account or the city council to file laws, sorry, to file lawsuits. These are not legal orders, and it is one thing to stop funding programs for legal orders and for laws. It is a whole nother thing for illegal executive orders to be followed. I ask that the city council direct the mayor not to eliminate any DEI policies, and I ask the council to continue to support the diverse community that Bremerton is. Thank you.
I'm Mike Simpson. I live in District Six. Council President, I'd like to thank you for urging the decorum in the in the room. And I'd like to bring the temperature down a little bit because I'm not here about DEI. Personally, I don't endorse it. That's just my opinion. Like it or not, I don't endorse it because it doesn't provide for a meritocracy. It doesn't, it doesn't provide equality. So and we'll not not get off on a tangent about that. What it does do, it just promotes promotes one group over another, and we see that right now where we have a back and forth between the groups on both sides of the aisle. And we don't want that. We want the things that bring us all together. So one of the things that can bring us all together are sidewalks, and damn it, this members of this council promised that my neighbor on Snyder was going to get his sidewalk fixed. You lied. He lied. And I'm pissed about that because you said that we were going to fund the sidewalk in Gary, you know, Gary's house. That's screwed up. Okay, the sidewalk has, has, it has a ramp that goes into his property. And because of this ramp, this defect in the sidewalk, two different collisions have happened to his garage. It could have killed his brother, who usually works in the garage in the last one. It was a high-speed collision with a DUI. And because the city didn't do its due diligence and fix the sidewalk the first time, they're the ones that are on the hook for it. And who in the city is going to take care of this? Well, it's us, the taxpayers. It's us, the people that pay property taxes. It's people that shop here in Bremerton and have to pay, have to pay the, have to pay all the different fees and taxes that are assigned. And to correct the record, AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, it is a lobbyist organization. That's what they do. They lobby government officials. And they basically promote something that I'm against, which is the growth of government. And if government is systematically dismantled at the federal level, I think our local governments will probably do better because we'll have a better opportunity in this cauldron of, in this laboratory of democracy to show what we can do. What can unite us? What can bring us all together? What can make our city and our county and our state a better place? And it's to promote the things and the merit of the people. It's not about what you look like on the outside. It's not about who you love. It's not about where you're from. It's about what you do. And if we're not focused on what you do and the content of your character, then we're looking at all the wrong damn things. You know, but hey, if you want to double down and hire a DEI manager and cost the city nineteen million, it's going to make you guys work harder because then you're going to have to figure out what you're going to cut in the city government. Thanks.
George, good evening. Buenas noches. With all due respect, City Council, thank you so much for signing that letter. My name is Martita. I'm a resident of Bremerton. And I just want to say, I want to apologize. I came in with a sign because I see maybe you cannot see that it's distracting. And I wanted to be fair and bring the equity here. That's why I come out with a sign. But I think that's distracting, moving all these signs here. I just wanted to also mention that, yes, we do need diversity. Mayor Wheeler, I highly respect you. I was initially part of the DEI when initially you wanted to bring this to Bremerton, very excited. But yes, we need this back. I know there is a lot of money involved there, but we, with diversity, equity, and inclusion, all are immigrants. I'm an immigrant, and I proudly, I can say I proudly support our community, and our community, our immigrant community, brings the economy of the United States up. We enrich this country and make this country great because immigrants are hard workers. And I am so proud to be in this country, to bring in the economy up because we create job opportunities for families. And we are here to enrich this country, while I proudly here in Bremerton and Kitsap County. So thank you so much for signing that letter, and I really want to see Mayor Wheeler to please, don't think about the dollars, think about how other ways you can bring that money and support this community. Because we want to see this community lifted and enriching with our culture and the money. Thank you. And let's make America great again.
Anyone else for public recognition?
My name is Lance Bird. I live in District Six. And certainly want to congratulate Judge James Armstrong for taking on the duties. I'll talk louder. His speech was inspiring, and I have a lot of hope that he really will bring order back to our courts. And I've heard that some views that I have on Judge Flood are shared, and I hope that's true. And again, ask that you do whatever is in your power of influence to get her leave would be great. And if we could get a gentleman or the judge that, somebody like that, wow, that would be impressive. That would really restore a lot of confidence in the court here in Bremerton. Again, I'd like to remind, getting to the federal dollars, those federal dollars, Trump has the right to do the executive orders. He was elected. Seventy-seven million people agreed with him. He made his campaign very obvious about what he stood for. And the American people decided that DEI and illegal immigration was an issue, and they want it dealt with. And if this city, if they want the nineteen million dollars that goes along with it, go with the will of the American people and obey. I know you may not like it. I understand the position that Mayor Wheeler is in, and I commend him for taking a stand. I know that has to be difficult. It may not even be something he wants to do. It may not be something you want to do, but it needs to be done. Stop the DEI programs. Don't put it under some other name or try to disguise it as something else. I don't believe any of you are racist. I don't think any of you, I don't believe Mayor Wheeler is racist. I believe that you will look at somebody and you will judge them for who they are. And that's all we're really asking. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alden. I just want to say it's roughly about twice a year that me and Mike Simpson agree on something. I recently went for a walk over by Fifteenth and Snyder, and I think the sidewalks there could use some love. Thank you.
Right, folks? Anyone else for public recognition? See, and I'm now going to close public recognition, and I understand some of you may want to leave. We're going to take a five-minute break. So if you want to leave, or you're more than welcome to stay for general business. Again, we'll be talking about the CDBG program, Consolidated Plan Process, and the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element. But we're going to break, go ahead, break for five minutes right now.
My tongue is raw from biting.
Got to take it, you know?
The best part is our council reports. So they go back and watch them.
Oh, and all the general business items, you get two presentations, maybe twenty minutes. I don't know, I could be underestimating, but. No.
No.
Yeah, that would be fair because he got first stake and the rest. So, okay, we'll work some. Yeah, that'd be the fair way.
Yep, that works.
We're going to go ahead and resume. Mr. Goodenough, Councilmember Goodenough. Into those rest of the conversation. So I think we're live, so that's all. Hey, welcome, everyone that decided to stay for the rest of the council meeting. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and start the meeting. All right. Next, we'll turn to Ms. Vector for general business. Go ahead.
The first order of general business. Item A is update on the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty CDBG slash home consolidated plan process.
So we have Ms. Linham, and Ms. Linham, I believe you have someone from Kitsap County, maybe your counterpart that's also going to be presenting, or?
Bonnie Tufts from Kitsap County is here. She's the CDBG Home Program Manager at Kitsap County. So she's here to answer any questions, if there are any questions that come up about the process in general or county-related items. I also have Joel Warren, who's the CIA Fund Manager, and he should be on Zoom as well.
Okay, great. So please proceed when you're ready.
Great. Well, thank you all for having me here today. We are in the process of just conducting our next five-year update to the Consolidated Plan for our CDBG and home funds that we received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds primarily benefit low-to-moder income individuals, families, and neighborhoods in our community. And specifically, I'll be focusing on the community outreach piece of this process and how the public can participate as we look ahead to the next five years. And so I'll just do a little recap on what the Consolidated Plan is. It is our five-year framework that we develop in a joint process with Kitsap County. And it allows us to assess our needs and market conditions and make data-driven, place-based decisions on how we utilize the federal dollars that we receive. Our goal is to utilize available data and community input to identify needs and create a strategic plan to help meet those needs. The five-year consolidated plan is made up of several components. We are in the public process piece of that right now. The public process combined with the needs assessment and the market analysis inform our funding priorities and all of that together make up the strategic plan, which is again a part of the consolidated plan. So what does this process look like alongside our normal annual process? Right now, we're still gathering data and which includes a community survey as well as outreach to service providers and other local governments. That process will inform our funding priorities. Those funding priorities will be included in our Year One Policy Plan, which will be two thousand twenty-six. And that will be posted for public comment and presented to City Council at a public hearing in May of this year. And from there, we will conduct our usual annual grant cycle for the first year of the Consolidated Plan. And our grant application and review process will run May through September. And then we submit our consolidated plan along with the first-year action plan in November to HUD. Funds included in this process, in coordination with Kitsap County, the coordinated grant process includes the city's entitlement of Community Development Block Grant Dollars for projects like housing rehabilitation, public services, public facilities projects, and economic development projects that primarily benefit low-income individuals and families. The Home Investment Partnership, which is administered by Kitsap County, we receive twenty-nine percent set aside of those dollars for affordable housing projects, including construction of new units and acquisition. And lastly, the community investment in affordable housing or CIA, which is the one-tenth of one percent for affordable housing, those are local funds that are also included in this joint process. Community outreach is hugely important as we go through this process, and we will be reaching out to our service providers and conducting agency consultations and participating in regional meetings. County staff will be presenting at the other municipalities and the Board of Commissioners. They will also be attending. They will also be attending the regular, they are also attending a regular meeting today if there's any questions about the consolidated plan process. And I would also, we are also going to be, I will also be attending the District Six Monthly Meeting on March 10th and invite other council members to reach out to me if they also would like to hold a district meeting as well. And then last but not least, we are reaching out to the community at large and asking folks to participate in the process through a community survey. And then we will also, we also just sent out an e-news flash, I believe it was yesterday. And I encourage folks to go and sign up for those updates because we will be sharing when there are opportunities for public comment. Our goal with the community survey is to receive input from the public as well as our service providers on what types of activities they feel are most needed in the community. The survey includes six categories, and within each category are different types of eligible projects. And survey respondents are asked to rate the different activities on a scale of one to five, one being no need and five being high need. And our survey is now open. Again, we're planning, we sent out a notification, but we'll be sending out more as it gets closer to when the survey closes, which will be at the end of March. And there's also a link in the council packet. Please feel free to share with your constituents. And then at the bottom of the survey, there are links to sign up for both city and county updates on this process. And then again, I'm available for questions, and my email is there if anyone has other questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyman. Since this is an information-only item, the council will not be commenting on this. Instead, we're asking for a public comment if there's any. No action will be taken tonight by the council. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this? And Mr. Sorensen, you check online, see if we have anybody? Great. Hey, we got something coming up.
Yeah, we live in Bremerton. I just wanted to say I took the survey. It took me about 15 minutes. It doesn't take very long. It's a really nicely done survey, so I really encourage people to take this survey and just really think about how you kind of rank things based off of what you see and observe. I, you know, I have no stake in it. I don't work for this office. I just, I took the survey, and I thought it was a really great opportunity to think about some stuff I actually hadn't even considered. It's a huge plan to work on, so I recommend taking the survey.
Good, thank you. And if not a lot of people do the survey, your answers will have a lot of input on the direction, so. Thank you for those comments. Any other comments from the public? No? Hey, let's move on to the next item, please.
The next item is 7B. It's going to be the overview of 2024 Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element, and that is presented by Vicki Grover.
Welcome, Ms. Grover. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and the public. I would like to talk tonight about the planning documents and the work accomplished to date and the next steps in our approval process for these updated planning documents. So today, we've been working to update two planning documents at the same time. These plans are the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, which was last updated and adopted in 2016, which was the last comprehensive planning cycle. The active transportation plan, previously known as the non-motorized transportation plan, was the city's first active transportation plan and was created and adopted in 2007. So a reminder to everyone that the comprehensive plan update is a requirement of the Growth Management Act. The purpose of the update is to show how the city plans to meet the projected population and employment growth for Bremerton over the next 20 years. Due to the interrelated content of these two planning documents, the city decided it would be beneficial to update the plans together. And this is due to a number of considerations, and I'll review just a couple of these. There are some areas of the transportation element required by the Growth Management Act and Puget Sound Regional Council to address multimodal infrastructure planning and future improvements. So there's obvious and necessary coordination between these two plans. Updating these two plans concurrently also had as allowed us to closely coordinate the effort, which included a shared public engagement process. So again, one of the new GMA requirements is a concurrency assessment of multimodal level of service, which includes all users of the transportation system. This means that in addition to the current requirement for us to assess concurrency for vehicular level of service, we will now need to do a concurrency assessment for development projects to determine what infrastructure will need to be provided for pedestrians, transit, and cyclists. This is to be accomplished by reviewing development proposal as they come into the city through the concurrency management system, again, required for all transportation modes. Slide Dave. We conducted an introductory survey in Jan, starting in January 19th through February 15th of last year. There were 23 multiple-choice questions developed in conjunction with city staff and a professional public outreach company from Seattle. The initial survey had three goals. We wanted to understand current travel behavior. We wanted to learn about the public's perception of barriers and to learn about opportunities for other modes of transportation. And to ask the public to help identify options to improve Bremerton's transportation system. We received a total of 605 responses, and we received some really good feedback from the community. One of our methods for public outreach was a postcard, which turned out to be the most effective recruitment tool for our survey, with more than half of our respondents accessing the survey due to receiving the postcard. Over a quarter of the respondents to the survey were recruited through the Bremerton website. So listen on this slide are some of the findings from that survey. The survey document result is still available for public viewing on bremerton2044.com, and it's at towards the bottom of the page. We also did an interactive map was presented for public comment to help us update the bike and pedestrian networks. This engagement was available to the public from August 19th through September 8th also of last year. The map was GIS-based, and it would allow people to draw lines or place circles on locations within the city, and then they could write a comment related to that line or circle that was placed on the map. And the goal of this outreach with the public was to have them tell us where using the map they would like to see future improvements for multimodal transportation. Comments were received and considered for updates to both the bike and pedestrian networks. The networks play an important role in determining where the city will focus on investing in active transportation programs and active transportation facilities as part of project development. We also received a pretty good response from the public during this three-week engagement. We received 225 comments on the map, eight emails and letters from the public. Thirty-six percent of the comments requested new facilities or raised concerns about existing facilities along one of the network corridors. Sixty-eight percent of the feedback focused on the bike priority network, reflecting a strong desire for enhanced bicycling infrastructure. There were comments received regarding an addition and elimination of some of the bike corridors originally proposed on the bike network. As an example, we heard that the Fourth Street Corridor was preferred to the Fifth Street and Sixth Street corridors, and that we needed to extend the bike network north of the Warren Avenue Bridge, and that respondents preferred a separated bike connection instead of the proposed route along the off-ramp, which was Claire Avenue that is shared with cars. Preference was heard to extend the bike network along Burwell to the west of State Route 304 Calo Avenue. The pedestrian network also received strong comments related to the need for safe crossings along corridors such as Fourth Street, Sixth Street, and Eleventh Street. On this slide, we can see the comments from the public that were made. Those are the lines and the dots that are shown. And so these are the comments received during the summer comment period. There are two topics related to this interactive map and the active transportation plan and the priority networks that I would like to clarify. First, what we meant when we were calling them either higher-medium priority maps, lines on the maps, was to represent for the bike, different from the bike, excuse me, bike network from the pedestrian network. So high priority, we had intended for those corridors to be more of a direct route to key destinations such as transit and public services. While the medium priority were intended to represent the more recreational routes or corridors. But based on the comments received from the public, I believe that there's confusion regarding the meaning and the difference between these labels. And I believe that with that kind of confusion, that there's a possibility that maybe we just eliminate the difference between high and medium. Because again, that the lines, the proposed networks are to help us in the future to develop projects. All the public comments that we received on the priority networks were carefully considered as part of the process and to provide revisions to the bike and pedestrian priority networks that are currently included in the active transportation plan. Slide Dave. So again, we placed two draft planning documents on bremerton2044.com for review and comment. While this comment period has closed, the draft documents remain online for public viewing. We are currently reviewing and considering the public comments we've received. A summary of those draft documents online are the draft active transportation plan, which has four attachments, and the draft technical appendices that support the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. It has a summary document and six attachments. And again, those are still available online. We are still taking comments. You can email me directly. We have the comp plan at bremerton email address on bremerton2044, so there's still opportunity for comments. Next slide, Dave. So the technical appendices that are produced to support the transportation element include an assessment of our existing transportation system for vehicles, freight, transit, and active transportation facilities. We must assess our existing system for future needs. Future, as defined by the Growth Management Act, includes a near-term planning horizon of six years and a long-term planning horizon of 20 years. We use the projected population and employment data provided by Puget Sound Regional Council to evaluate where the transportation system will need future improvements to accommodate this growth. This included in our project list are concurrency projects. Concurrent is a requirement of GMA, and what it does is it ensures that public facilities are adequate to support private development projects without decreasing service levels below established standards. We evaluate intersections in the city to determine if we currently have any intersections operating below our adopted level of service standard. And then we look at the near or the six-year, and then we look at the long-term planning horizon or 20-year. We are also required to develop a financial plan to show how the city will pay for these future system improvements. And this includes a reassessment strategy in the event of a funding shortfall in our financial plan. Next slide, Dave. This slide here is a map of the six- and 20-year projects from the capital improvement plan. I've had some questions about what these project or these lines and dots represent. The project list was included as online with the draft documents, and every project on the CIP is included and shown as a line or a spot or intersection improvement on this map. So this includes our concurrency projects as well, and you'll see that some of the lines are shown outside city limits. That's with coordination of Kitsap County future projects that we show some of those lines. Anyone has questions for this map, please reach out to me, and I will be able to answer those for you or at the end of this presentation. Next slide, Dave. The update of the 2007 non-motorized plan is also being done. We are focusing on updating the network within the city for cyclists and pedestrians. Some of the revisions to the network include consideration for getting to local destinations, schools, transit services, public services, and parks when we looked at and considered these proposed or future corridors. In addition to consideration for recreational uses for both pedestrians and bicycles, we would like to promote alternative travel options for the citizens of Bremerton and to encourage healthy lifestyles and reduce our vehicular traffic. Slide Dave. So this is a slide where we wanted to communicate with council, a message that we heard when we went to Planning Commission on January 27th. Planning Commission had made a recommendation that we finish the update to the transportation element and the appendices associated with the element that are needed for the comprehensive plan. And that we pick up the active transportation plan after the comp plan has made it through its process. What we've heard is we would like more time for the public to engage. We would like to focus solely on this plan and really put together a good plan that the public feels that they haven't had enough opportunity to be involved in comment. And so we, Public Works, we support the idea for moving forward in this manner, wanted to share this with council. And then eventually, once we decide if that's the route we're gonna take, we would need to look for budget and a timeline for moving the active transportation plan forward. Next slide, Dave. This slide is just some key dates from 2023 through January of this year. These are dates when the public was engaged for comments. Some of the events I listed at the bottom of this slide is when staff attended various Friday night art walks, parades, to let the public know that we were updating these plans and how they could give us comments about bremerton2044.com, etc. Next slide, Dave. Now, this is just, this shows a graphical schedule for the adoption process of the comprehensive plan moving forward. And as you can see, here we are in February, City Council Comprehensive Plan Update, with our goal and deadline being send it off to PSRC no later than May of this year. They're looking at about a six-month turnaround time for certification. Next slide, Dave. And then this is just, really just the dates from that graphical schedule shown on the previous slide. So the public can comment, has any comments received tonight can do in person, which we would really appreciate. They can do public comments in person again at Planning Commission on April 21st. And as I mentioned before, they can still reach out to me directly. They can go through the comp plan email site on bremerton2044.com. Just remember, everyone, that we must send the city's complete comp plan to PSRC for certification, which allows the city to continue to seek transportation grants. which allows the city to continue to seek transportation grant funding. Thank you very much, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grover. Again, information-only items, so the council will not be commenting tonight. However, we will be accepting public comments. So does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Alden. I remember that active transportation postcard I got in the mail. Something bothers me about it, which is that it was only in English. And my concern with that is I know about twenty percent, one in five households in Kitsap County, English is not their primary language. I don't have numbers for Bremerton just because the census doesn't publish them, but I'm guessing they're higher. Typically, it's higher in cities. And that's a concern particularly here because people who don't speak English are not distributed homogeneously throughout the city, you know, being pockets, little neighborhoods. And my concern is that if we're not soliciting feedback from those Bremerton residents, then we're kind of doing redlining by proxy. I don't know how to go back and fix that. We've already done that survey. And I think if we had a DEI manager by now, that's the sort of thing that they really could have identified before it became an issue. But I would like us to do something to make sure that we're not excluding any particular segment of Bremerton's population from participating in this type of survey. Yeah, I'm open to your ideas, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments were noted. Anyone else for a public comment? We don't have any one other, anyone else on Zoom. Mr. Sorensen just confirmed. So with that, opposed public comment. Now we're going to turn to the last item of the night, Council Reports. It's an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or planned to attend, or speak on any other city-related topic. Since it's the last council meeting of the month, we'll start with District Five. Councilmember Good now.
I really don't have a report for tonight, but something that was said earlier made me want to mention this. Of course, I'm not sure if the person still here brought it up, but it had to do with the Pledge of Allegiance and that they believed that we should reinstate it, but we should have the ability to choose not to participate. And that's actually what we've done. We've made the Pledge of Allegiance optional, but the entire council has just chosen not to participate. We didn't pass a law banning it or removing it. It's just optional. And then this council felt that we would all choose not to participate in it, and that's why we haven't been conducting it since the onset of, well, we stopped doing it at the onset of COVID, but we haven't done it since. But anyways, I just thought that, you know, that was an interesting thought and a little different way to present it. And so, other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Rebelowski.
Your microphone's not on.
Sorry. We often have comments where people have this perception that being homeless means you're a criminal in the city of Bremerton and that our police are mistreating people that appear to be homeless. Well, this was a drug bust that our police department, with the help of the Port Angeles Police Department and Squim Police Department, held. So this is seventy-five thousand dollars that they got. And the next slide, please. These are the weapons they picked up in this one raid. And the next slide, please. This is the forty pounds of illegal substances they picked up. Frankly, our police department is understaffed and way too busy to be going out of their way to harass people without housing. They do not ask people their homeless status. No arrests have been made for being unhoused. Sixty-seven percent of the calls that our police department is doing recently are related to drugs, alcohol, or domestic violence. They average four domestic violence calls every twenty-four hours and more on drinking holidays. They have done some arrests for Department of Corrections warrants, but they do that on people with homes also. Common Streets is our, for lack of a better word, our social worker contractor. They reach out and search out people who are unhoused constantly. And a lot of the people accept services. And then there's a lot of people that they've reached out to over thirty times, and they're not ready to accept services. But that doesn't mean that they stop reaching out to them. And we don't have enough facilities around here. We have volunteers who Common Streets will get them to agree to go into a treatment program or into detox. And we have volunteers who will drive them to Spokane, down to Vancouver, or even out of state. So, I mean, there's lots of opportunities because our contract with Common Streets, they can't provide transportation out of town. Right now, Bremerton is the third highest crime by population in the state. We're only behind Tacoma and Aberdeen. And really, our the unhoused population is not their primary, secondary, or third thing to go after. They don't want to go after people who are unhoused. That's not their job. They don't want to do it. They try to be compassionate, and whenever they do, I mean, there are instances where, yeah, they're going to have to talk to somebody because they're doing, somebody with a mental health crisis is doing something really inappropriate in public. So they will be the first person that they'll talk to. But then they call in for assistance from anybody who can possibly give them assistance. We pay a mental health tax in this county, and we obviously don't have a lot, enough mental health workers to help in these crisis situations. But I just wanted to put that side of the story out there, too, because we often hear that the police are going after the unhoused. And hopefully, within this year, we have a better situation for people who are unhoused, many who are suffering from mental illness or alcoholism or other drug abuse. And we have to get them more help, but we also have to do it in a kind and compassionate way. And I think by the city hiring Common Streets to do that, that is the best way to do it at this time, because it's certainly not our police department. Okay, and my next slide, please. Oh. I'm having a town hall on Thursday, March sixth, and Joe Crane from the Affordable Housing Consortium is going to give us an update on the hybrid shelter and answer any community questions. It's being held in District Four, but anybody in the city is welcome to come. It's at the Bremerton Food Line, starting at five o'clock. And if you can, bring some non-perishable goods so that we can donate that to the food line to help more of our neighbors. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fry.
I don't really have a report tonight, but I do want to thank everybody who keeps suiting up and showing up, letting council and others know how you feel about what's going on in your city and around the country. So we really do appreciate you, and I also want to recognize Councilmember Rebelowski, who just really communicated some of the heart and soul of what's going on with our public safety and some of the corrections that need to be made in the perception of what our police department is doing. So thanks. Thank you, Jane, and I look forward to seeing everybody again next week. Thanks.
Okay, before we wrap things up for my report, I want to appreciate getting everybody's input tonight. For the most part, I believe the public recognition went fairly smooth. There are areas I could use improvement on my behalf. And one is, I believe, the use of signs, and I think we're going to come up with a solution where we have a more of a wide-angle view, so we can pick up everybody's signs instead of the person that got there in the. So I'm learning. It's been a while since I've been in this position. And I've been through this before. Many years ago, we had far bigger groups, so I should have remembered how we did that before, so I apologize for that. And also during the break, we had a hot mic. Don't know exactly what I said. I don't think I said anything controversial, but if I did, I apologize, and I'll learn on that one. My wife sent me a text that says I can hear you, so. Oh, boy, the fun of being in office, so it is what it is. With that, a reminder that the next regular study session will be on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, beginning at five PM. Six-four council room with a remote option available on Zoom. That concludes tonight's regular council business, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.